You're like, just turn it silent.
Yeah, it depends on how you look at it.
Are we good?
Good.
Okay. Welcome now to our special city council work meeting tonight. One item on the agenda, 1.1, future agenda items. Anything for future agenda. I will say that we did, or I don't know if we need to anymore, what we talked about yesterday. Do you still want to put that on the work meeting next week as well?
For the...
The intersection?
Yeah, I think we should. We're actually putting it on there already, so.
Okay.
So we do have a regular meeting, this is a special meeting, so.
Okay.
We do have a regular, there are a bunch of stuff that's already on that regular meeting agenda.
Okay. So we will move right into our administrative reports, and Nathan, before I turn the time, I just, I just feel like I need to say something tonight for this. In this effort tonight, we're a team in this right now. At this point now, we've entered in, we are a team now with Harriman 73 properties. We're a team in this, so I would ask for both parties, all parties involved, to understand that if there's questions, it's nothing's, from either side, I don't think there's any, I think we want, I think we all want the same, we all have the same goal right now, so I just ask that we keep that in mind, we're all looking for the same goal tonight, and it's, I think we all want a good project, I think we're all, want this to be successful, and I just ask that we all keep that in mind tonight. So with that, Nathan, I will turn the time over to you. Do you run a point tonight?
What we hadn't talked about, but I will give a little bit of a, what you have in front of you, so there's a couple of things, what we'd really hope is this is an opportunity for council to talk to the developer, to have some back and forth, a little bit like you did with Olympia. There are several items in front of you. There are four MDAs, and we can talk about why there are four, they can explain why they would refer four, but essentially, your baseline is the zone that exists. Each of these properties has a zone that exists. These MDAs are asking for slight variations, or sometimes maybe not slight, variations from that zone. So the idea was that there would be MDAs created for each of those specific areas. You should have received, and some of these are late, and so I apologize on that, and I would just ask that the Harriman 73 partners explain what changes they've made, and then allow you to go back and forth. Again, this is a work meeting, so it's, we aren't going to decide, yes, this is what it is, but this is a chance for you to go back and forth and maybe come to some agreements, so you can provide staff some direction. So you have the MDAs, those pieces, and the changes that they're requesting that go with each of those MDAs. And then there is the PIT, the Public Infrastructure District, which is another piece that they've included in here as well. These all eventually fit together to create this project. So with that, I think we, did we have a map that we can show?
There was one in the packet.
I thought there was one on the staff report.
Yeah, the staff report. And that helps out, shows where MDAs cover for each area.
Yeah, and I think this, this will be more just for your reference as you're looking at them, and I don't, I'm not going to try and get into what each MDA is asking for right now, I think that's a better conversation to have back and forth with the developer, if you have concerns. There's also an infrastructure list, what they intend to pay for with the PDA.
I will read it.
Strike that, strike that.
I meant personal data assistance.
Oh!
Didn't you remember Palm Pilot? Didn't everybody have Palm Pilot? Once I got rid of my Franklin planner, I had Palm Pilot. I skipped the BlackBerry. Here is, so the blue is the one that's going to refer to AMSD. This orange color, I think we call Miller...
AMSD Miller, North of Miller.
Yeah, AMSD, north of Miller Crossing. Miller Crossing's this road, so we're talking about the orange piece, north of it. We may, if we want to change that name, it's gone to a couple of different versions, but it's this property. Garden plots is here, it's like the upside-down Utah. And then the Crescent piece, which I know council very familiar with. So when we're talking about these MDAs, we'll just maybe leave this map up there, so you can see exactly where, what they're talking about as they go forward. So we've had, I think we've gotten as far as we really should go as staff without council weighing in and giving that final direction, so these things can be put together. The planning commission did hear, or look at...
Yeah, we had a work session discussion, very brief.
So there may be some input from them as well to the council. Ultimately, this is your decision, how you want to do it. So with that, I'm going to stop speaking for, I'm going to put my mouth again.
Do we want to have the developer team go over their changes?
I, I think that would be, so I guess if I were in their shoes, and they can, they can do it however they want, I would probably focus one at a time instead of trying to say, well, this is what we're doing in each one.
Okay.
I would just pick one of these AMSDs, or one of these MDA areas, talk about it, go back and forth, and if you're good at that, then you can move on.
Let's start with, let's start with the AMSD, the easy one, I think that's an easy one.
Let me talk about generically, before we talk about the specific changes to the zone, if I may. Let me talk about why, the question Nathan brought up is why we're doing this as an MDA, and why are there four of them? I think that's important to understand.
I agree.
And let me talk about the first as to why we're doing it as an MDA, and then I'll talk about why there's four of them. Obviously, the city and the tenants and the developers want assurances that the zones are going to stay for a reasonable period of time. Say the first tenant in the auto mall doesn't want the auto mall ball district to change three years from now into something that doesn't work with an auto mall use. So you want to lock that in in the concept of what Utah law calls vesting. There's really only one, there's only two ways to do that under vesting law, and I'm sure Todd will correct me if I get anything wrong here. Number one is to come in with full-blown subdivision plots, and file the subdivision plots, pay your fees, and then go forward. Nobody's going to do that for all four of these properties. So in this case, we're not asking for any forgiveness, we're not asking for any after-acquired property. You simply know what you're getting. We're getting AMSD plus a little bit, we're getting C2 plus a hotel, for example. In Crescent, you're getting C2 plus auto mall uses. In North of Miller, you're getting AMSD plus some flex office, and that's it. So we need to lock that in for the tenants, and also before you do all that master infrastructure work to lay it out. So there's no other vehicle in state law that recognizes vesting. About 10 years, about 17 years ago, we put the concept of development agreements in state law, in the purpose section, and specifically authorized local governments to do them as a vesting tool. Since then, there's been several cases from the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals on vesting and development agreements, recognizing that that's how it works. These are more akin to what I call a zoning agreement, but there's no vehicle in state law for a zoning agreement. So every time I've done this in the past in similar situations, including times with the great Jody Burnett on behalf of local governments, we've done it as an MDA because that's how the legislature and the courts recognize it and understand it. I'm sure Todd would agree with me that the last thing we want to do is try to present a judge with a vehicle that they've never seen before. Judges don't generally understand land use law to begin with, so, just a fact, Supreme Court doesn't understand land use law. So we want to give them a vehicle that they've already seen, and it's called a development agreement. So that's why we're doing, that's why we're proposing as doing it as a development agreement. We've taken out all of the things that have caused Harriman problems, and I understand those problems in development agreements in the past, such as, I said, after-acquired property, endless flexibility for 100 years kind of thing. So we've limited the flexibility, we've limited the term, we've taken out the after-acquired property. So that's why we want to do it as MDAs. The question is, why do we want to do it as four MDAs? And there's two reasons for that. Number one is because if we were trying to do this as one MDA, it would just be very complex, because you'd have four of these amendments to the zoning codes as attached as exhibits, and it would confuse people, to put it honestly. And the other thing, the other reason you do it as four is frankly for title reasons. If you're trying to do a title search, if somebody comes in to buy the property, finance the property, if they're looking at four, at one master development agreement with all four of these pieces, it's just going to be very complex. So the other, the third reason is, we thought it would be cleaner for you to see essentially one base template for the MDA, but to get a clean look at all four of the separate zones, so that there wasn't any confusion. It was really easy to see, okay, in Crescent, we're asking for this, and in Garden, we're asking for this, as opposed to trying to mix them up, because it is a little complex. And when I originally started writing it as one, or working with Todd to write it as one, just realized that it wouldn't work. So anyway, that's, that's why we're proposing to do it as MDAs, and that's why we're proposing to do it as four. Todd brought up a question earlier, which is basically, well, what does the city get out of it, what's, other than locking in zoning? And the concept I created there is what we, what I've done in other times I've done zoning in the zoning MDAs, and that is, we're taking out several of the uses from the zone, so it's just not a one-sided transaction. We're taking out uses that would otherwise be allowed, that we don't want and don't need. So the city gets some determination. It's not like when somebody comes in and asks for a rezone to, say, C2, and you don't know what's going in C2. It could literally be anything that's in C2, and that's not how development agreements are normally working. Development agreements normally work that you know what you're getting, we know what we're getting, it's locked in in a contract, and it's done. And that's why we wanted to do it that way, and thank you for letting me bring that up early. I've got an eight o'clock hard stop, but I just hope that we wouldn't wind up at 7:55 with me trying to talk that through. Oh, by the way, we worked it through with Todd and Blake and the rest of your staff and Nathan, and I think we're all comfortable, obviously it's a policy call for the city council, but I think we're all comfortable with the vehicles, the way we've suggested to you to do it.
So I'll look for feedback from council on four MDAs. Are we okay with moving forward to four MDAs? Not in concept?
Four versus one makes sense for the reasons you're talking about. Are they all necessary?
Thank you.
So we need to talk about each one for you to be comfortable?
Agree. I, I would like to see, I mean, if they say cloned or duplicate or similar, I would love to see if that's the case, and minus the few exchanges of what are proposed in those zones, and then make sure that that's, that's the right legal vehicle to do it, other than, you know, one master MDA with, with property and, you know, plots and layouts and to vest the property, to make it comfortable for the new buyers. I mean, that logically, it makes sense, and I think that's where, if it makes sense on the legal side, then is it more lifting for staff on, on the actual physical applications or processes? Yeah, so, yeah, I don't think I have an issue with that.
No, same. I don't, I don't, I don't know that I'm good with four MDA, but in concept, I don't have a problem.
Steve, any comment on this?
I just thought, what is the time horizon on the MDAs?
What do we put in, 10? 10 plus 10?
We put 15.
We put 15. And the reason for that is just, especially the auto mall, that's a big piece of property, and dealers don't come in all the time, and the North of Miller is a longer project as well because of its size. We're not, we like 15, I don't necessarily know if we're locked into 15, but we'd rather, we'd like 15 just because, and the other reason I want to say this, because the uses are so limited. This is not like a 6,000-unit residential project that comes in over literally 30 or 40 years. These are commercial buildings of the kind that the city wants.
Another reason why it was 15 is because the PIT was also 15 years old.
Oh, that's right, thank you very much, the PIT is 15. I forgot, that's, that's right.
Is he, how long is the tax incentive?
That CDA is also 15 years.
Thank you, Todd, I knew I was forgetting something.
I guess I would just make the comment that I'm okay with the longer time horizon. However, I'm, I might like to see some language that allows for some flexibility, or maybe some benchmarks or targets for progress. I'd hate to think that we make this initial move, things are great, we hold it for 15 years, and then nothing more happens for the next 13 years or something. I'm not necessarily comfortable committing to that idea without an out or an option down the line, should that be mutually agreeable.
It's always able to kill it if it's mutually agreeable. Performance targets, as you know, are hard to do. We did negotiate some performance targets in Olympia, and I think those were really well done. We can talk about some performance targets on some of these things. It's a little harder to do a performance target on a commercial than a residential, because, as you know, Steve, the commercial sort of comes in when it comes in. It's in everyone's interest here, and I mean literally everyone's, it's in the city's interest, and it's in the developer's interest, for it to come in as soon as possible. If it sits there not generating any taxes, not generating any, any money to pay the PIT, not generating any income for the developer, it doesn't generate anything for the city either. I think, I think we're locked at the hip on this, and that's why I'm, I've, I've seen performance targets a lot in terms of mixed-use developments, where you're doing residential and commercial, and the city wants to make sure that they're getting the commercial at some point. I've honestly never seen a performance target on a pure commercial project.
Well, come on, Bruce, we're all about blazing new trails around here.
Well, I know, and you were very good at it, you always are good at it, and I guess we can think about it, but I'm not sure how you do it.
Is the PIT enough motivat-, to me, that sounds to be like gas on the beach.
I think the PIT's a gigantic motivation, and frankly, if the dirt's sitting there, all that's happening is Larry's paying interest to carry the dirt and paying property taxes and getting literally zero revenue. It's not like a turn and burn as a residential developer.
That's completely acknowledged and appreciated, that all of our priorities are aligned. What I would see, the economy and technologies are changing at such a rapid pace, that it's possible that in seven or eight or nine years, there may be just another way to sell cars. Maybe everybody wants to do something different. I just wouldn't want to have the zoning issue on a particular parcel or one of these development agreements, get in the way of doing something that's smart, that's down the road, that would be a much more complicated process. So I, I don't necessarily have a good suggestion yet, I'm just thinking out loud, I'd like to maybe have more of a discussion around that idea and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, and let me point out two things on that regard, Steve. Obviously, number one, if it is mutually beneficial, let's assume that the cars go away for some reason. Yeah, I was going to say, both, both sides will want to come in and amend it. And the second thing is, I think it, I'm not sure, was it your suggestion, but it was it somebody's suggestion, we do have that four-year review clause back in here, and frankly, I like that clause so much that I'm putting it in all of my development agreements now, because I think it makes a lot of sense, where people come and sit down and reason together every four years and say, does this still make sense? I mean, both sides have, it's a, it's a thing I sort of call a mutual Damocles sword. If we want to be stupid and you want to be stupid, I guess we can both cut off our noses to spite our faces, but there's, if there's a better option, I'm assuming that in those four-year reviews, especially as they say, without a residential where it's just turn and burn, if you come to, if you come to the city, to the developer and say, look, we just went to ICSC, and we have a potential purchaser for North of Miller who wants to buy the whole property and wants to do something amazingly wonderful that we've never thought of before, and oh, by the way, developer, you're going to make a boatload of money off it, and so are we, I find it unlikely to believe that the developer's going to say, nah.
No, I want flex space.
Yeah, I want flex space. I want flex space, or I want to sell flying cars, you know.
Right.
Anyway, that's my thoughts. If you've got any other ideas, Steve, you've always been creative, and we'll, we're happy to try to work through them and think through them.
I think a four-year, for me, a four-year check-in is good. To me, I don't need an out, because I think it's going to be mutually beneficial, something like this for me.
Yeah, again, in 10 years, if you've got raw land still there, and we got to find a use for it, and I, we're all invested in that property that long, for sure.
Right. That's how I look at it. But if you've got some other specific ideas, we're happy to consider them, Steve.
Okay, I'll just noodle in, I, I do like the language about the summit strategically planned out.
I like that term, I'm going to, you know what, I'm now going to call that the summit, I'm going to now call that the four-year summit clause.
Don't, don't use that, because that term insinuates nothing gets done.
Okay, that's true. A lot of talk, 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 and all that, action, 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 okay.
Okay, well, let's go, I think we're going to go through, let's go through each piece then.
Yeah.
Let's kind of talk about, again, I think...
I mostly shut up for that, because it's all design stuff.
And I think it's, yeah.
I would suggest that you start with...
AMSD for sure, I think is pretty much, any concerns on AMSD? I think that's pretty...
However you want to do it, I would suggest you start with AMSD, though, because that's...
Yeah, that's where we're starting, we're starting on AMSD.
That's the base and the biggie.
I didn't have any concerns.
Nathan, would you like to start with an update? I can give a quick update.
Yes.
A lot has happened, so maybe that would be helpful.
Please do.
Travis Johnson, we engaged in an actual architect, so now we're not talking about pretty pictures that might happen. We're paying money to have him draw the building, and so I'll pass this around, but this is basically it. It's much, it's very similar to what was there, and so the update, though, is Travis came to me and said, look, we need, we need to get a service center in here.
Is there a laser?
He said Mitsubishi wants to come in, and so what can we do to really make it, you know, get a new car dealership in here? So you know he's right here, right? He wants to go across the street to put a service center in.
Hold it up. Hold it up for the camera. I know, I know we all, you know, the demo, it's actually, it's actually happening, and so there, I mean, that's what...
It's a good-looking building.
He's here with that building right there, but he wants to put a service center here...
In addition to what he's doing?
In addition to the building that's right there. So I thought that was pretty interesting. So we're now engaging with him on a new lease on a new building. But the kicker here is, he said, we need it to, we need a service center that we can tack on a dealership sales center onto, because that's where Mitsubishi wants to be. He said, okay. So they, we took Mitsubishi's service center plan, and we're plugging it in right there, and there's a spot to bolt the building, the sales building onto it. So we're planning for that in advance, and Travis said, as soon as he shows that there's a lot of traffic for a service in that service center, and a lot of sales generated here and with Colby, that he said, we think we can get him in. So we're going to kind of take a little bit of a risk with him and see if we can get this thing going. Further update, we have, so we've got Travis and Colby, and then Jermaine Marine, and that's boat and RV. And they want to come in, this four acres here, but they said they needed more acreage, but they can't afford the price of the frontage on, as you can imagine, on Mountain View Court. That's the most expensive property that we've got, because it's right there on the court. So they said, what do you have? Do you have anything else other than this expensive stuff? And I said, well, we've got this. So they started looking at the Crescent piece. We know we can't go residential there, we know we need to keep a commercial use that's kind of, you know, not egregious to the neighbors. So, so we had them look at this, and next thing we know, we got an LOI for this four acres plus this 15 acres. So over here, here's a dealership on this four acres, showroom, inventory, you know. Back here, they want to put another showroom and a service center and storage for boats and RVs that they're working on, that they're selling, that it shouldn't be in a neighborhood somewhere in town, so they can put over here, and so it's going to be a very quiet, commercial, but AMSD, tax-generating use. So we're hoping to get them over the finish line. They got them in time to sign their, what they needed to sign for the PIT.
For the TIF, right?
The TIF, yeah. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Also, an update, the buyer that Game Point had that was going to come in with a similar use, it kind of fell through. So they called us back and asked if we wanted to buy it, and we would love to consolidate the whole auto mall situation. This is kind of a gaping hole. So we went under contract with them. Now, you've got an option on it, if you don't like what they're going to do, you can take it back. And same thing with us, if you don't want us to add this into the AMSD auto mall zone, it's your call. But we're under contract pending your decision to not let us buy it, right? Because you've got that right. So that's something that we would ask you to be thinking about. Is, is auto mall the best use for it? Do you have another use in mind? Where would you like that to go? That's kind of a discussion we'd like to have with you. And that is our auto mall update.
Quick question, standalone service center, does it meet the zoning under the auto mall? Or is that exclude, or is that a change or exclusion? Say, heaven forbid Mitsubishi doesn't bolt, bolt into it, standalone service center.
Well, service center would still be good, because that's going to be Travis's service center if they don't come in. Either way, he'll be using it, but part, sales, tax base, it's all a part of what we're trying to do.
And it still fits the criteria of what?
So is that still the, you're asking that that's still in the...
It's, it's still meet the zoning in the MDA.
In their language of their...
In the exhibit.
It is in the MDA exhibit. Permitted use as a standalone.
Okay. And that's a red line they've changed for that.
Was that already in there?
Or was that part of the actual zone?
I don't know if it's already in there, but it's in this. It seems like it was...
It seemed like it was in there.
But I can't remember if it was permitted.
I mean, it makes sense, but it's, I just, conditional, okay.
Sounds good, Larry, thank you. I think we're headed down the right path there. Any concerns about language in this MDA? I think we're all in agreement, we want an MDA.
Time to actually read it.
Yeah, yeah. Amen. Like, there were plenty of different emails today with different documents, and here's some red lines, and here's some red lines. It would be super unfair to expect this...
By the way, we apologize for that.
...to a red, and to, because these are, MDAs have to be fine-toothed, in my opinion. It can't just let's over this.
Right.
So, yeah, I have a lot to...
And then, again, we're not, I'm not looking, we're not, we're not making decisions tonight, but anything from original that had, we had concerns about?
No way to say, my questions are more conceptual, which we discussed earlier today, and others, go ahead.
I'm wondering if it might be helpful for, to show what they're excluding, and then just kind of show some of their red lines to help council.
And that's what I was going to be, because I believe that I could have...
And I have a regular job, I couldn't break away and read 200 pages two different times late Saturday.
So it might be most beneficial to go through the comments that were in the packet, that those documents, and show how each one of those items were addressed.
Let's do that. Do you want to run that, Blake? Can you?
We can, just cheer for that. Probably require a lot of information from the developer, but I can go with comment, comment, and stuff that, so.
Which, which document are you in?
I'm on the AMSD document.
The draft, page two?
The, the draft, existing AMSD red line, 8222. So the first comment is on page two, and a franchise dealership, for a dealership such as something like a National Auto Plaza, we just wanted to make sure we weren't limiting franchise to only like a Hyundai or a Chevy. But if you were bringing in a used car dealer, we didn't want to shoot ourselves, is what I'm saying. So, I don't know, it looks like the response to that was, they added a one-up for certain dealers.
Is that the...
Do you limit yourself on, say, Mark Carlstein Auto wants to come in, or some other auto dealership that's not?
I can tell you this, I just, I just saw this in Hammond's, I'm uncomfortable, and I think Todd would be... I can tell you this, I, I just, I just saw this and I'm anxious. I'm uncomfortable and I think Todd would be uncomfortable just limiting it to a particular dealer like that. I think this clause needs some work.
I think we're all, I think, because we wanna be open to it.
Yeah.
I just, I, I have a real problem when I, I didn't have a chance to see it. Maybe I'm speaking out of school and Eric can kick me, but I think this needs work to fix.
I think that was the intent from the commenting staff was, let's make sure we open it up.
It needs to be broad enough, but yeah.
And that we're not limiting you.
Well, the question was addressed to, do we wanna do something to include National Auto Plaza?
No, it was like a National Auto Plaza.
It does say that it specifically, I should, but I probably should have went with that.
We perhaps inferred something we shouldn't on that. We, we inferred that, that Colby had inquired about that and had wanted the right to do that. So I should have clarified rather than trying to solve the problem.
So.
But obviously, we're okay with, with, with addressing that and editing it, but we were trying to solve what we thought was a problem, but it doesn't sound like it.
So it needs to be more inclusive.
Right.
A little more broad, but to understand the concept. It won't take Todd and me more than a few minutes to fix that.
For language, okay, cool.
Okay.
Okay, next comment. Back to page four.
So like, to clarify, this is, is this the M D A that's in place?
This is, this, these are the, the changes, exceptions to the zoning that they're looking for. So the A M S D is there. So this is what is going to.
There is, there is no M D A on the A M S D, right?
Correct.
It's just the zoning change, it was just the, okay, that, okay.
This, this is gonna be the attachment or the appendices to the M D A.
So this is a new document, entirely a new document, right? Okay.
Yep. And this A M S D is the basis for each.
All the other ones.
They all want to say.
That's, that's not quite right. This is, this, what you're seeing is a final version of what was a series of red lines to your existing A M S D. But instead of being completely confusing, we've accepted the changes to the A M S D, uh, the red lines to the existing A M S D. And then Blank and the rest of the staff and Nathan and all and Mike and everybody else has made changes to the draft we submitted on that. And so, and, and you're seeing sort of a hybrid document here between existing A M S D changes that we'd originally proposed to that and then changes to the changes suggested by staff and then responses to the changes to the changes suggested by staff.
And Bruce, my point more was, was this a document that came in last year prior to Teddy and I becoming?
Uh.
Because we're.
Not to us.
Again, that's, that's what I'm saying. I just wasn't aware. So that's why I'm just looking for clarification.
Essentially the A M S D zone with changes. So ten three one auto mall exists.
So we're creating an M D A that might, that's even altering just the A M S D zoning.
I think, but actually, adjust that zoning to.
To mimic the.
So again, to go through everything, whenever somebody, any of these M D As references A M S D, it's this.
Right.
That's what they're. Just think to bring up because we discussed that with the development team at the beginning. Do you wanna just do a text amendment or do you wanna do an M D A?
Right.
And vesting with an M D A gave them more assurance because a text amendment could be changed by a council in future and change the name of the game.
I just knew we had talked about that used wasn't in that A M S D.
The original.
So now this is, it's all.
Correct.
Right. So really, the, the, the M D As themselves are just boilerplate documents. They, they're, they're literally only a vehicle to lock in place this zoning ordinance that's attached as an exhibit, the modified zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay.
Page four, our next comment. Uh, say we need to ensure there are some architectural enhancements to walls like these. So this is a ten foot screening wall around auto storage or a shelving unit. So our concern here was it would just be a plain concrete precast wall stood up with no character. There's a long end trail. We wanna see some bump outs, some texture or something on it. So we were just asking the developer to clarify how that would be changed. So it looks like the response was definition fences and screen walls requires compatible architectural fences and walls. So haven't clarified or looked at the definition yet.
It's in number one of all?
Number number one, okay. Deep water fish landscape, okay.
Okay.
Yep, water fish landscape, okay. So I didn't, so I'm sure it is.
So that one was pretty simple.
Okay, you will see a large section here on signage.
Yeah.
This is a change in the existing and even the signage overlay that we just did. I think they've incorporated a lot of that since that was limited to state owned roads.
Yep, so, so it allows.
We didn't, this, this came in new today, so we didn't have any comments on it at this point.
So we're talking about putting that new overlay over like a main street.
Um, yeah, so they, they had a sign plan contemplated beforehand.
Okay.
And that they were working through, looking at our overlay ordinance that was just passed in the last council meeting. And we, we went too fast, first time ever for a city to go, went too fast on the ordinance. And so they looked at it and said, oh, there's a couple of signs that don't work with this new overlay. So they proposed language in the M D A or the, this is all to work with their previous sign plan they had. And we've tweaked some of the sign plan things as we went along. There was a sign that was down closer to year one twenty six on Mountain View. They moved it back a little bit. So there's, there's been some, some work to get things compliant, but there was, I think there were two signs that, that needed to have a little bit of change from where our, our overlay was to make them work.
On the overlay is an option. I mean, you don't have to use the overlay as a tool. So this would.
So they can keep their sign.
Good point.
Yeah.
We, we all along, we were sort of in a race with your sign ordinance. And we didn't know who would win the race. And once it became clear that you actually won the race on the sign ordinance, then we shifted from doing our own sign ordinance to tweaking yours rather than, rather than reinventing our own wheel, we tweaked your wheel. Because your wheel got done faster than we expected.
And applied it only to your project.
Right. And we applied it only to the part for this project.
And then you have, I'm assuming you have signage down the auto mall row and those would, those are all detailed out.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we'll, we'll comply with everything, we'll comply with everything other than the exceptions that are shown.
The view ones here.
To your overlay.
Yeah, if you look at towards the ending of exhibits, it'll show, we have two signs along corridor, we have a couple on one twenty six and we have some on auto row and main street. So it shows the sizes and where those locations are.
The types, the locations, it's.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, so you're saying that, I need changes to the A M S D zone are the ones you called out? So these are just changes to a previous version of this?
These were just comments we had as we read through that based on, there were, there are other changes in there that are not discussed right here that we staffed as we worked with the developer, we listened to the meetings, kind of, to try to take away from that and implement that in. So.
So it's more my question going along the lines of what Mary was asking us, right? What is maybe a review of, here's what the A M S D zone is. What is the M D A changes and why?
So we can actually provide you the full red line between it. I just pulled that up here. We switched it from just new vehicle dealerships to the new definition talks about uh dealerships, franchise dealerships, motor vehicle dealers. So we expanded it to allow for used cars. So in, in the one that they purged out today. So Will, Will said it, it probably will look somewhat confusing because there's gonna be all sorts of strikeouts and and uh color, but you'll be able to see if it's struck out what was changed and.
Are there any major changes other than?
Okay, even if it's just, here's, here are the structural changes. Here's what the A M S D zone was, right? And we could review what our intention of that was. And then here's, I mean, really, because the M D A, we wanted to vest certain things. So what, what are those things that are different than the zone?
We can, we can put that together for you. And uh, yeah, I think it's mainly, you're probably looking at uses.
Yeah.
And the biggest change is the use from not allowing any used car cells to go into used car cells.
Yep.
That's basically the purpose of it. And then the, the signs. So signs were allowed in the A M S D before, but this dials it in more because now we have an actual sign plan. This level four pervasive.
Okay.
And then we've got this modification sections, several sections of C two that, that shall not apply.
Dude, that's a different, that's a different, this is.
That's different, yeah.
That's a, we'll get to those in a second.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Let's, maybe.
Saying some of those things, like, those are the things that got interested in rabbit and.
I'm talking to council. I think that's our next step. I wanted to hit this one because I think this was pretty basic, pretty simple, this one.
And this forms the basis for all of the others as well because with North of Miller now will have A M, is gonna be based on A M S, this A M S D and.
With changes.
And, yeah, and Preston is gonna be C two with, with this.
Right.
As essentially almost an overlay. Um, so those, so this pyramid's through three of the four.
So I think that's what, that, that needs to be our next step, I think. I think that one, I'd like to check that one off. The rest of them, I think we need to now decide what we're okay with as far as exception. There's two issues I think remain as far as what I'm hearing from council. Of usages, what we're gonna, what we'd like to not see. And then the P I D. I think the P I D is like not, I think we're all okay with the P I D on A M S D. I think we need to understand how we can use the P I D on, I think we kinda talked about that last meeting. And we need to understand legalities of applying this, because you're pulling the whole, all four M D As into the P I D. So understanding how is that public improvement? Is it a public improvement? And then I, I could use some help understanding legally, can we do that? First off, are we gonna get, I don't wanna become another target of the state if we're improving the, you know, a sidewalk or something along in the crescent that's gonna help. And then, so that and then can we do, should we do that? Because we wanna see this built. We understand the need to build the main line. But how do we, how does that all tie together? What's council comfortable with? Like, for example, we talked a little bit about, I don't know that I want a P I D if we want a hotel there. We talked about that because if there's an increased tax on that property, it's gonna be harder to recruit a hotel, for example. Right? If, if I understand P I D correctly, right? Because they'll pay a higher mill levy on that if we improve the P I D. So that, it might make us clear what we need to kind of go over, like.
So the P I D aspect of every piece?
I think we're all okay with the P I D on A M S D. I think we need to talk about P I D on the other three and then uses. If I'm not, any other concerns?
When it comes to the P I D, I, I mean, I would agree that A M S D like tells. Previous meeting was it's public infrastructure district, so specifically what public infrastructure is being built.
And that's in here. So I think they've.
So what is that? And then how do these other ancillary properties tie in? If there, if there's no public infrastructure in those areas, if they're just part of the, of the pool to use the funds for it, then that's kind of a stumbling block.
And tell me how we, because you did a P I D, this was before us.
We did have Aaron here to, that's been one of the drafters from Gilmore Bell on this document.
And we did a P I D, just I think, to be clear, I think we did a P I D on, we did several P I Ds on Olympia, right?
Yes.
And I think.
Several different ones.
Right.
For the infrastructure in those specific areas.
We did a different version of the P I Ds.
And I think it opened my eyes a little bit when I, after you and I talked today, I went in and I think we've always assumed hid, you know, infrastructure was, I've always pictured roads. That's for me, it's always been roads, roads. But there's a lot of sewer, there's a lot of unders, there's a lot of utilities that are gonna go into this that to me can't be considered a public infrastructure improvement. I mean, if you wanna speak to this a little bit, this is new to me, so.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, come on, I'll bet you.
So I think the, you know, main consideration um for public improvements is, is public ownership. And so, you know, I, are you guys in Rocky Mountain Power? Are you guys, uh, local? So, so that'd be the one exception, right? Is the, the typical utility is your road, your sewer, your storm drain. You know, all those kinds of improvements that the, the, the city would typically own or a district would own easily qualify as a public improvement. So you're right, you know, roads, easy box to check, the sewer lines, easy box to check. Uh, you know, the sidewalks, if they're part of the roads and all those kinds of things can all be categorized in that. So ultimately, it's public ownership. If they're gonna be dedicating it to the city or another public entity, um, then, then that's a clear public ownership. So it goes through kind of both a state law analysis of what a P I D can finance. And then, you know, the second level of that is also a tax exempt analysis. That a district can only issue tax exempt bonds for stated kind of public purposes. So we, our firm would also do a tax analysis to make sure that the boxes were being checked, that they weren't, you know, financing a auto dealership with, you know, district money or something like that. So that's kind of the general framework that goes into it.
And Eric, explain this to me then. I'm, again, being new to this and tried to do my homework on this, but.
Yeah.
So basically, so these areas then, say we did do a P I D on all four areas in one P I D.
Yeah.
So that, so basically the property taxes, there's an additional mill levy applied to all four of those areas. Then, so they take basically almost a bond right now in a way. They, they get the money upfront and then the property tax pays that.
Yeah.
But it's not, that doesn't come out as future city revenue, right? That's just, so there's no harm to the city.
Directly.
Directly. What indirectly could there be? Because I don't.
Yeah, so, so you're right. It's, it's a new revenue stream, you know, so tax increment takes existing taxes and reallocates them. Public infrastructure district is a new line on the tax bill. So maybe you would have had six line items with the city, the county, the school district, et cetera. For, for people in these four areas, there would be another line. It would be the public infrastructure district. It would be the taxes. Brennan can speak more to this, but you're right. It basically allows them to do an analysis of what is the value of this property with the forecasted development over the life of the bonds and convert, you know, based on the tax rate, convert that into an amount that they can borrow.
And that's only on the tenants or the people that are gonna occupy the cities?
Yes, it's only people within the, the boundaries that the city council draws us. Yep. So it can't reach out and grab a neighboring area, you know. It, it has to be within the district's boundaries to be subject to the district's taxes.
It could hurt us if we lose out on a possible tenant due to the higher tax, such as a hotel or a dealership or whatever. But I don't think that's gonna be significant.
Well, the usual issue is if you've got a tenant like that and they balk at the P I D, landlord is gonna reduce the price to make up for it. It's the same way you do with, with any bonded indebtedness or any tax indebtedness on a piece of property. It's what I call left hand, right hand money. If your right hand P I Ds is paying for the infrastructure, well, then your left hand's probably gonna discount the land a little bit.
And in this case, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, this is Brennan from D A Davidson who, who does the bonding. So I made this point to the staff when we met, but, but, but that's just a math problem, right? Like Bruce just described. Either way, whoever buys the property is paying for the infrastructure.
Is paying for the infrastructure, yeah.
Yep.
Right? Whether it's baked into the cost of the land upfront or it's paid through a property tax over time. The, so, so what, so what the advantage to the city is, for example, is that the infrastructure money's gonna be raised upfront.
And it gets done.
To put that in, to complete it. The purchase price and attracting a hotel or other things, that's just a math problem that the hotel will come in and say, okay, I'm paying additional property tax, therefore here's the price of the land that I'm gonna pay you. Right? Which may be a discount than if it was baked into the price upfront.
Could it be viewed almost as an incentive then? Because the infrastructure is already.
No, Laura, let me, let me put it, let me say something here. In, in terms of commercial property, a P I D is neither an incentive or a disincentive. It's just a mechanism by which required infrastructure gets done. The incentive part is um the T I F that's allowed, right? That's the, that's the, where they get their incentive for coming in. That's essentially you, you build a hotel, you create taxes, you're gonna benefit from it.
Right.
As far as the P I D goes, there, the infrastructure has to be built either option A or option B. I mean, it's gotta be built. This just gets it built so that a developer can come in and almost have shovel ready stuff because the infrastructure's there. Yes, they pay a little higher mill rate over time, but it just changes the, the math for their financial analysis on when they break even.
Does, does it finish our sidewalks quicker, though? I mean, does it, and that's, I mean, yeah, it completes the sidewalks, it makes it, yeah.
So what's, what's the risk? Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna say, my, my main question is, I started out to say is that I, no argument on, on that part of it. Everything is just discussed for the auto mall. I have a hard time seeing especially where the crescent piece fits in, like our pop fits in. And what we're most concerned about is getting something in the auto mall. All these years, nothing's happening in the auto mall. There's been no performance there whatsoever. So as we look at this P I D, at least what I wanna see is that that's what gets done first.
Yeah, I think.
So my, my concern is, okay, you do one P I D, you put all these areas in it, and the money's used for this road over here to get that money. We never get the. We never get the infrastructure that we want, and then it doesn't get done.
Can you? It's, I mean, can that?
And to your point, a PIT is not going to be sufficient to pay for all of the infrastructure costs. It's only going to pay for a portion of the infrastructure costs. So prioritizing infrastructure where and when is an important part of this conversation.
That's what I want to hear. And there's several cities that have addressed that. So for instance, Ivan City with the Black Desert Project down there. You know, the city was saying, if we're going to give you this district, like, we need underground parking. We don't want large parking structures, blocking viewpoints. And so they built it into the governing document that you'll either put up your money or you'll use the district money first to pay for those parking structures before you're paying for your roads. So you could do a prioritization where you're saying, if we do the PID and the PID bonds, we want to guarantee that the road goes in first or the sewer line. So whatever your prioritization is, we can match that in the governing document.
That's the nice part about it, Perdido, is you have control over that in the governing documents. You, they can't do, the PIT can't do anything that you don't let it do. So if you've got a concern, we just deal with it.
Once again, that, as I said in our previous committee meeting, like the detail, that's on us to include those details and make sure we.
From the developer's standpoint, I think our interests are just perfectly aligned. We have, we have three tenants that want to get into the auto mall. And we want to sell that first because it's a critical mass that makes it work for all of the dealers. And so if you said, for example, we want the first PIT dollars to be spent on the AMSD area before anything is spelled spent elsewhere, well, number one, that's where most of the money is, it's bony anyway. Number two, that's where we want to spend it first anyway. So I I think we're aligned.
Okay. But you can spell that out in the governing document. And just to circle back to the Crescent piece, I think the reason why it's included is frankly, it gives us more bonding capacity, right? To finish the improvements. But I don't, you're exactly right. There's no connection there until the auto dealer said, we want to take down that property as well, right? So there, that's the connection, is it's the same dealership that's agreeing to the PIT. So we said, well, why don't we loop them in and then we can have more dollars to put in the infrastructure.
So it will help them come faster, almost the marine place. That's, yes, yeah, I'm okay. I'm okay. I mean, if we can outline that to where we are, then I'm okay with the PIT on all.
And there are some PIT dollars that will be spent on the Crescent piece. It's a smaller piece of the overall.
Right. And I see the amount here, so that's, yeah.
And and a PID, I mean, just on the topic, they can finance onsite and offsite improvements, right? If they had to do a water tank somewhere that's not in PID, they can do that by the same logic. You know, if the Crescent piece is saying, I'm benefited by these roads, I'm benef- benefited by the proximity of these dealerships, I mean, that's kind of their analysis. And honestly, we wouldn't have gotten this this group to come in without that, less expense, less expensive fees. Because that way they could put their whole campus together in close proximity and not have to pay frontage prices.
Absolutely.
We're driving time and fees, yeah, for sure.
Okay, I'm okay with that. And I think if we outline that, I'm good with PIT then on all four. Any other concerns about, Sheri, any concerns about?
Just like to see the details and then I'll tell you if I have concerns.
It's kind of the same thing we've been saying is these details.
Okay.
Do you think?
Go ahead, go.
I should say, do you know the prioritization that you have of the improvements and we can work on that? Or is that something that you still just need to?
I think there's some discussion, yeah, well, but.
The main, so that that main, from what I understand, especially the end users, it's that road and utilities to those three lots.
You just tell us what it is, we'll put it in the government document, right?
Yeah.
Now, I think that's priority one, yep.
Okay, so it'd be the.
Underneath this.
Utilities and roads.
Document, the auto mall portion here.
It's AMSD.
Okay.
They would have.
AMSD first. Which which includes everything north of Miller Crossing. That's all AMSD.
Okay.
So it's about that. I don't know if we'll do anything different than AMSD above that. We just wanted a little bit of flexibility.
Which if you look at this, it's about eight million dollars in the thirteen. So it's the big, it's the majority.
Okay. Okay. So I think we include that and then governing documents then, Nathan Blake, you guys?
So we've had a couple drafts going around.
That would be in the MDA, that would be in the MDA then, right?
So so this will be in the PIT, governing document.
The PIT governing, okay.
The PIT governing.
So what we, what we'll do is we'll add a section that says prioritization and then council can look at that and say, well, we'll try and get it out to you ahead of your meeting. So you look at it and say, yes, that's group, that makes sense, or move this one. With the governing document itself, what we tried to do, so it's different from Olympia because it can charge taxes and that was one of the big differences. You know, Olympia had to have a lot of changes to remove that ability. But what I took was the other things that we had agreed to, like procurement, you know, procurement rules for the district. I took those directly from Olympia, put them here, assuming that you're going to want the same kind of rules to apply here where it's not something to do with property. That's, that was kind of the base.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mary. You guys are an asset to this, like, really, you guys have been huge for the city, so thank you for watching some of this new.
Yeah.
Mechanism. Okay. Any more questions on the PIT? Brandon, there, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here. I'm gonna chase you out for your work.
Okay. One more question, because I didn't hear that last part very clearly. I heard procurement, so I just wanted to make sure that we're going to be following the similar ideas that we had about that, that we included in like the Olympia MDA and PIT requirements that talked about how there's a review process and how that's done, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that's what, exactly.
That we were talking about and I couldn't hear it, okay.
They pulled the same language, I forget.
So I just have a follow up question. I mean, the comment was made that PIT's not going to be able to fund all the infrastructure improvements. What's the plan for the rest of it? Because you apply the PIT over that entire area, you can't, you can't do impact fees, you can't do those sorts of things. So what's the plan to pay for the rest of it?
Well, we've been paying a lot so far, you know, we've been developing some of the land already, so we just pay as we have tenants, pay as we have buyers.
Well, it's it's not quite true that you can't do impact fees. You can't have a double dip. You can't charge a PIT for the same thing that you're charging an impact fee for. But if you're doing an impact fee for something other than a PIT improvement, then you would have both impact fees and PIT on top of it. So for example, if there's, we're not going to do a park here. So the PIT, the impact fees for parks would still apply.
Okay.
So whatever you're not putting in that service, in that district.
Still, we collect that.
If it's not, if the PIT is building, is is doing a system improvement for which you are charging an impact fee, then the amount of the system improvement component dedicated to that PIT-built infrastructure has to come off the impact fee. There just can't be any double dip.
For example, like Olympia, we did not charge any water or storm drain, but we're charging police and fire. Because they're not building a police station.
Yep, station. Makes sense.
And just for context, about eighty percent of the infrastructure can be financed. And so the the rest of it needs to come from the developer. That's typically how it works.
Thank you. That's what kind of my follow up. Yes, so then by making the comment that it's not going to pay for all, but like, what are you referring to? To me, to me, that means it's not going to pay for all, it's going to pay for all the sewer, but we, the PIT, the PIT's paying for those, so we can't collect any back fees, so it's.
You're exactly correct in that situation.
You're not having to spend it, so you don't have to collect it, right?
Yeah, because those would be project improvements anyway, not system improvements.
So you're planning on.
They're going to fund it.
Well, and to me, that's kind of the same answer as as the levy, right? The math problem. Okay, well, we want to go in here with this amount. It's not an impact fee, you can't use that mechanism through the city, force you to do it, but if you want in, this is what it costs.
Okay. Okay, well, let's go through uses then. I think that's probably our big right now that we can go over today.
Of the next, of the other three.
Could I suggest you, the easiest one to go next is probably north of Miller because it's just AMSD plus. I'd suggest you go north of Miller.
Exactly.
And then you do Crescent, and then you do Garden Pots.
And just looking through those modifications you were mentioning earlier, I I just looked through them, I had to jog my way to it.
I'm looking, I don't know, the same or not, or like what?
So the first, the first couple of them apply to, when we have larger commercial developments, where you require like a central focal point or like a playground or gathering area, they're excluding that. They're excluding bicycle parking and trails that match the adjacent development. So it's it's basically stuff like that, brick and stone. They took that out because they're talking about franchise.
Yep.
So it's there, I just couldn't remember. It's been a week since I looked at it. Heard a lot of stuff in a week.
Well, I looked at the codes and there's no way I'm looking. Yeah, there's. Beef, hyper, loose, everything.
So north AMSD uses. Let's go through you, they are, where they have about ten, on page two, right?
Ten, ten, yeah, page two, ten.
You talk about additional non motor vehicle to manage uses.
These are where they've had, if you can see the purple right there, office, professional, restaurant, general, vehicle, equipment, rental vehicle and equipment, repair, general, wireless telecommunication facility, light manufacturing, vehicle storage yard, wholesale and warehouse in general, office warehouse, flex space, office warehouse, retail general.
Yes.
Any concerns with those? I have a couple, but I'll let you.
I mean, some of these are also things that are removed if you go to the back. As we did say, I think the very last page on some of these, I have too many, so I'm trying to find that one.
Yeah, vehicle storage yard, yeah, describe that.
Say that.
Vehicle storage yard. What what does that entail?
Dealerships need vehicle storage. They have to store inventory.
This, so this is north of Miller, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our comment on that one, if you're looking through the staff, was that should be accessory.
It should be tied to the ownership.
Because you'd have to tie it to a dealership. So you don't have to get a standalone pickup park or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah. Say I've got a mechanic shop and I've got fifteen vehicles broke down inside my shop. Does that fit that category?
Well, I I don't think we can let you in as a as a repair shop in the first place.
No, I I know, but I'm, yeah, that's what I'm envisioning when I see vehicle storage yard or a towing yard or a.
Vehicle and equipment repair general, so you could have a vehicle repair shop listed there, and then you can have a.
So you're okay taking that out?
We will take that one out.
You can take it out.
Yeah, that's what I'm just envisioning.
Although with a service center, well, I guess that's what we.
Of course, that's north of, uh, north of Miller.
Service center is a repair shop.
Yeah. Well, that's true, but I think we always intended a service center to be connected to a dealership.
Easiest way to do it is like, we just make it accessory, accessory to the primary use of the car dealership. That's the easiest way.
Yep.
That's the easy fix.
We should probably define that too, Bruce. That's not a term that we have in our phone.
Yeah, yeah, we'll def, we'll define it, we'll make it accessory. That's a piece of cake. That's a good catch.
What about a rental equipment shop or vehicle, a U-Haul or a trailer shop or is that, that would be permitted to this, right?
Well, I I think we're we're just looking for ways, we 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 want the auto mall to extend above north of Miller. We want, that's what we want. But if we can't fill up it all eighty.
Is there sales tax?
Oh, yes.
Then we want to have some options as well.
Yeah.
I pay a lot of tax on rentals.
God, yes.
Where they go, but.
So, okay, the thing I'm envisioning is like construction equipment, right? And it's going to be eighty-one, which I'm not against that, but my question is, I mean, the whole purpose of this doing this zone was to have this particular tax base. I'm okay with car rentals, truck rentals, trailer rentals, construction rentals, as long as there's a commercial sales tax.
Yeah, and I I'm not worried about, let's say, a Kubota wants to come in or whatever, like that, that would be great, right?
They're huge, yeah.
They generate more sales taxes.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
Holy crap. So, have you checked this? Does a rental place get tax, sales tax for the?
They're the city, I don't know.
Sure do.
Sales or is it, sales or service? I'm assuming.
I think so, but you know, that's a question you get, where's Alan?
I'm the new Alan.
Oh, you're the new Alan. Sorry, I forgot you're the new Alan.
Don't tell, don't tell Alan, but this is our new and improved Alan.
I forgot. I'm looking around, where the hell's Alan?
They are taxable. There are some exceptions, but for example, motor vehicle rentals are taxable. Like, if you go to enterprise and rent a vehicle, you're paying sales tax.
Yeah, and I'm assuming it's a car dealerships and repairs need rental vehicles.
Probably the same way. There might be some exceptions, but the majority are taxable.
That's good.
So we we can tweak this language to make it, we understand, we understand what you're wanting, your concerns, and it won't be hard to tweak this language.
And that's, I mean, wireless telecommunication facility, I don't want to.
Verizon store.
Yeah, Verizon tower necessarily. Or do we get money from that?
The tower's fine, I think.
It's a dead spot on the highway, everyone wants it.
Yeah.
Why go to Rymas?
Right now, they're currently only allowed on government owned property in like the end two.
Public and quasi.
Well, I guess, but wait, what is wireless telecommunication facility? Me, to me, it's the Verizon store.
It's a.
Maybe it's the tower.
You need a tower.
So this is the tower, not communication facility?
It is.
How could you?
Yeah, wireless communication facilities are the tower or, you know, those, not the recent, not recent.
Not on mine.
That would do.
My my question, Lauren, would be why, why would, why would we not want it?
And that's fine. I just, that was my question. I didn't know if there was.
Yeah, my service sucks.
I mean, that's better than having it at the school.
Yeah, and by the way, that's a, that's a, I think that definition comes from the federal act as, I think, yeah, I think that comes from the federal rules. So that's why everybody just uses that exact, is that nomenclature.
I'm okay with it.
There might be.
I mean, if there's a real, if there's a reason not to have it at the mall.
No, it's just, it was a question I had, I just.
Well, I think it's relocation.
Stenics.
It could, they can make them look like pine trees or.
No, 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 no.
Come on. What about a, palm trees, yeah, palm trees too.
By the way, we don't know if anyone that wants to do that here. We just thought it would be a good idea.
No, it's Verizon tower.
So if it, so I mean, and they don't take up a whole lot of space, but what I'm envisioning is like, none of your auto places would want that, right? Because of the visual part of it.
If it's a dead spot, they will.
But if it's.
We're talking north of Miller.
Talking north, yeah. So if it's not, if it's not auto facing.
Right, it'll be well.
If it's off the other end, it's not, right? Yeah. So maybe it's just placement, right? As long as it's not on the main thoroughfare.
Uh, office professional space, what do we, what are we thinking? Doctor, lawyer, client facing.
That's actually defined, that's a defined term in your code.
Is it? Okay.
I've got the uses here to look at. It's highlighted in the pink line as you go through the pages, so you can see the OP.
We've heard from, in previous discussions with with the council, that, you know, for people not to have to drive to an office, but the office here in town would be preferable. So I thought that would be a good use for some of this if the need, you know, someone came to us with that use.
And to, this is, I'm jumping ahead a little bit even to flex space. I think, Larry, you tell me if you guys are, and I think you're already on track, so I don't think this is going to be a concern. But, and I think we're, again, you're becoming a victim of prior, some previous bad experiences in some MDA's. I think a couple members of council I've talked to would like to see some language to be assured, like, there's three dealerships maybe started before we were to move that to a flex space, for example. Again, because we've been burned in other times when we've, somebody had moved ahead with other spaces. And again, I think we can do it to, I think you're already there, like, where you can say three dealerships are.
But I think they've already got the LOIs and I think they're shovel ready, right?
LOIs does have the.
So one is a signed lease, one is a signed lease that we're, we built the suit as Travis, and then Colby has actually purchased his land already.
So I think that's, I, I mean, I think that's.
Walmart is not where Winko is, so it doesn't be.
True, yeah, I mean, until there's a substantial portion completed, like, none of that would need it. We, I mean, Walmart's the perfect example. I mean, we had built the road, we had an agreement, they went all the way through planning commissions, spent tons of money on their architecture, planning, everything, and then at the last second, we're not building it.
So my, our, all, all, all voice, kind of my personal con- concern there is what we're talking about is zoning, right? So this circumvents, replaces, I shouldn't say circumvents, but it replaces the zoning. This is, this is zoning. This doesn't come back and go through the process where we vet those things out, right?
That's true.
That this, this is zoning, so we need to tie those things down. So some of that unlimited flexibility, right? So if we're saying that we're putting in this MDA, that they can do X, Y, Z, that's zoning. Like, we've decided the zone, they can do that.
But let me say one thing. What is, what is that zone right now? Is it C two right now? Or is that all AMSD?
This is all AMSD.
All AMSD.
So this is AMSD plus minus. No, it's actually AMSD plus.
So that's what we proposed.
There is one other.
So, okay, considering other uses, but our main objective is the option, right? And so we want to have a s, a good portion of that, in my opinion, completed before we jump and change the rest.
Well, okay, so. Yeah, I I get what you're saying, and I think it's the same PIT discussion, right? Let's get the PIT here first.
Oh, yeah.
So I understand and I'm with you guys. There is one other mutual purpose that we should talk about here. And that is if we do something up there simultaneously with doing something down in the auto mall, you know, blue part, you get your money back faster. So that's, that's your land right now. We haven't bought it yet.
Yeah, because of the takedown schedule, yeah.
Yeah, so the takedown schedule on that is twenty twenty-five.
Would you have to take it down before you could start building on it?
Yep, you have to take it down before we could bring in a tenant.
So we could put a clock on it associated with the takedown.
To to enact the MDA or into, you'd have to have the MDA in place.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah.
Give that some thought.
And we're not, again, this is where the.
You know what I'm getting, like, we're okay looking at other uses, but to to just jump ahead and basically, oh, we're. You know what, I'm getting, like, we're okay with looking at other uses, but to, to just jump ahead and basically, oh, we're zoning without our, our core objective being.
I think we understand your concern. Let us, let us talk on the side about how to, how to write around it. I think there's ways to do it.
And I don't, and I, I know where you're saying completion, but I think there's other, for me, there's other assurances that I can see that we're there. Again, I know it's not, I know it's not an LOI, but it's a step.
Well, for example, a sign. A, a sign doesn't mean anything.
No, the usual version is a building, the usual trigger I use is a building permit, because if somebody's gone to the expense of designing a building, buying the property, and getting a building permit, they're locked.
Did they pay the bond?
Did, did you help the D, was it DAI with the office building storage?
Yes, sir.
So, that's the same sort of concept.
Yeah, that's, I knew what you were looking at. That's why I was familiar with what you're talking about.
Why don't we let Bruce guide us on that, because it sounds like he's had some positive experience with what works.
Again, and we're not, again, we're not trying to stall that up there. It's just, we just need some assurances that.
I don't have any tenants.
I get the DAI stuff from Larry.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, there's, there's no, there's no one knocking on our door up there, so I, but we, we hope, we hope.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We good there then? We good there? Any other concerns on?
Any other concerns about the uses allowed, the eighty percent setback, or locked coverage buildings? It's all pretty basic stuff.
I'll dig through all those. That, for me personally, like, conceptually, that's my main.
Yeah.
Time Roman numeral font.
I understand it. That wasn't my. That would be my, yeah, that would be my contribution, just the font.
I prefer Arial.
Sanskrit.
Okay. Okay, let's move to, um, Garden Plots.
Garden plot is just C2 plus hotel.
So, not excluding any C2 uses, just adding in a hotel.
We're taking a few of the C2s out that we knew you didn't want, and that we don't intend to use. That was sort of, we talked about at the front end, which is why it's sort of a zoning agreement that works for both sides, because we're adding some in and taking some out. But basically, this is just a definition of hotel and motel, which you really don't have, and it's saying that you can have a hotel and motel in addition to C2, and then there's some standards to it, and that's, that's all it is. That's why we really like doing this as four, because it just makes it so easy to, uh, to, to roll with.
It looks, I mean, it's cleaner.
Larry, can I ask a question on, maybe it's, not a question, maybe it's LOI that you had on the garden. I would, I don't know if that's still there.
For the, for the hotel?
Yes.
It is still there, and we are negotiating the PSA now.
Okay, and I would say, just reach out to us. We've talked to Tony a little bit. I don't know if you've had this conversation. Nathan's had a lot of experience with hotels. If you want us to come in, because there might be some, there might be some incentives we can help offer as a city that would help entite and help bring them in. So, if you want our help, I'm just saying, if we can help.
We do, because they asked in our last meeting, what are the incentives?
They said that exactly.
So, we do want, they will ask. So, we do want, in fact, that was a great timing, because we want to execute on the PSA, get the earnings, when you get them, bring in the plans.
Okay.
Zach commits it, right?
So, okay.
Let's, let's.
Whatever we see here.
Nathan, as soon as possible, and I'll get with you.
We'll take it to MotoX.
We also, we added hotel and motel uses. We also added AMSD plus uses in the event that a service center or something related to the auto mall wanted to locate there on less expensive land. So far, that hasn't happened.
We thought we might need overflow space on this like we did on the Crescent, because someone came to us and said, here's what we're looking for. Right, so we don't know if someone's going to be on the main street side of Auto Drive in the auto mall and say, well, we really like a showroom across the street or something. We don't know.
Right.
So, we wanted to have an auto mall expansion.
And again, I, I, right, and I'm okay with that.
Are they looking to purchase the whole plot, or is it the whole seven acres or just a section?
One south of that one.
They might be on the north edge next to the, uh, which I think this is good, next to the neighborhood, or they might be in this middle section right here.
Okay.
The whole.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not opposed to having a service center over there or anything like that, or even a show, like a, a few car showroom over there or something.
Well, and I think the hotel, I think if the hotel, if we can get land that, I think that's going to change that whole. You're going to have a lot of people wanting to.
Just Parker Ferrari in the lobby hotel.
You know what, you guys kept saying hotel, but we didn't have any candidates, and then one day someone called us, and all of a sudden, it's like, we're hotel fans.
Yeah.
You know, we think it's, it's a best.
And I think it'll be the second best thing to an auto mall as far as tax base, so we're excited.
Yeah. And we need it, and we need it.
That is better. Well, okay, then.
You're just doing it.
A lot of businesses like that.
You bring as many hotels in there as you want, and we'll change whatever you want to put them in.
You know, whatever you want. And I think it'll, you'll get more C2, more retail type used around.
Garage grill will love you for it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, it's a destination. They'll want those featured, those services.
Any commercial uses of it.
So, you talked us out of the, out of the homes, the apartments there. We're actually thankful for that, not because we think some good uses are coming.
How tall can we go on a hotel?
Oh, that was the other question.
Oh, yeah, that's the question. That's a mistake we made.
It says forty-five. I think we need to keep that up, and I think we need to be open.
Forty-five floors or forty-five feet?
No, not four, not fours. It's a hotel.
Trying to think on the last one.
I'm not worried about height, but it becomes a.
We talked about forty-five. I think it says forty-five, Bruce.
It says forty-five, Ben, but I think we could go up.
Yeah, but forty-five is not enough.
That's not enough for the resources.
Yeah, I don't think, no, no.
It's a spring.
Because you're fifteen, sixteen, fourteen, yeah.
Well, that would stick you.
After the lobby.
Yeah, you're probably twelve to fifteen, and then it's fifteen, sixteen, fourteen.
Let me suggest how you do.
Hold on, hold on, okay. Sorry, a lot of people talking. Bruce?
Let me suggest sort of how Salt Lake City does it in their downtown districts, and what they have is they have a, and it's easy to clone in, and, and Blake's, I'm sure, seen it, Todd may have seen it as well. You could put like a sixty-five feet base that's permitted, and then you could go up another, say, thirty feet under what's known as a design review process, where it would go, for example, to the city council, I'm sorry, the planning commission for design review, so that it stays consistent. And, and the reason I'm saying this is because it's easy to clone that language directly out of the Salt Lake City code. And Salt Lake City has a lot of experience, and the code works well. Okay, well, I'd say sixty, I'd say sixty-five, and then with a ninety-five, uh, with a subject to a design review approval at the planning commission. And we can clone that language in, in just a heartbeat.
That's probably, last, last Marriott I did, we had a fifty-five foot.
Yeah, I'm looking at fifty-five.
And we had to, we had to do a variance on, on one of their.
And under, and under Utah law, you can't get a variance. Under, under Utah law, you could not get a variance.
It wasn't a variance. We, we.
The special exception or something like that.
We wrote something into the code that allowed that one little piece to stick above it, but I remember fifty-five was the code.
So, it's a piece of thing. I'd, I'd say sixty-five and go up to ninety-five pursuant to a design review plan. We can get that, we can steal that. I can work with Blake and Todd tomorrow to steal that language out of Salt Lake City.
Bruce, do you have anything really apparent if you want to share with us? Because you have about two minutes.
I'm, no, no, actually, I, I was about to tell you, I've actually, uh, moved my meeting. I, I slid it back, so I've got another fifteen minutes.
Wow.
And we're going to make it, since we've only got Crescent left, um, so, but we need to do this design review really quickly. I can talk to Blake and.
I do have a question on garden plots and I think on Crescent. You list, they added private garages, which in our code are specifically prohibited. What, what do you?
Yeah, I, I have no freaking idea.
You know what, you know what, that's, I can, sorry.
Okay, the answer was, I have no idea, so kill us.
Easy to write that.
Okay. Larry, you have one more use you were talking about in that, the climate controlled indoor storage?
Oh, you know what, that shows up, but that was a mistake too. Um, the, the boat RV dealer wanted to have mini storage and, um, climate controlled storage. We said, we didn't think so. They said, just put it in. So, we put it in, and then we said, no, we're not going to do that. No one wants that. And so, we took it out, but somehow a remnant of it was left in.
So, you're okay with that?
We don't even, that's, that's.
Second, check and drop out.
Yeah, that's, sorry about that.
I feel better about that.
Lots of energy.
No, we're fine. That's why we're going through.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And by the way, I can send you, I'll be just cloning to Blake and Todd in the morning, the design review process outside of Salt Lake City. So, when it goes through planning commission, they will at least be looking at the concept, and then we can tweak the particular language s- once it comes to you for final. But the, the concept is pretty simple. There's some standards that say, why is it good? Why is it better to have it that big? And if you need the standards, it's still discretionary at the planning commission. They say no, well, okay, they say no.
Okay.
I do, yeah.
Okay, okay, let's Crescent piece it then. Who's Crescent? We talked like, let's go to the Crescent piece. It's been a long time.
No, that was.
That was Garden. Oh, I like Crescent. Crescent has private garage, isn't it?
It does, yeah, but they're striking that, yeah.
Crescent is just.
Are we striking it on?
No, we're not, we're not striking it on, on this.
On Crescent.
Or you're wanting private garages on Crescent?
That's what, that's what the dealership wants to have various versions of storage, because people want different levels of storage.
They want private garages just per the boats or RVs.
Right.
But who are they owned by?
They're owned by the dealership?
Well, maybe, I mean, they'll store them if it's inventory and space, or they'll, or they'll.
The garage is owned by.
Who's the garage owned by?
Garage is owned by the dealership. But what I'm saying is, they'll, they'll let, they'll store their own stuff there, their own inventory, the clients that they're servicing, or people who need a place to store their whatever.
So, they'll store their boats there, or their RVs there.
Yes, there are some high-end boats and RVs.
Right, right, right. And I'm okay with that, but when I see private garage, I think I've got an access storefront that I can park my boat or RV in there personally.
No, it's, it's the, it's not.
Okay.
It's owned by the dealership.
Okay, so, just some, just some language there.
They have the, per the use of their main business, not.
It'd be like the auxiliary.
That's what I'm saying, leave some storage.
Well, I think they're, they're, part of their business model is they, they.
They would write a store.
They need, they need different storage, but I'm going, I, I think I know what you're talking about. Let me try this.
People driving there, their trucks in there and unloading a washer or whatever that sits in there.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's, no, so, so their business model is they want to sell it. They, they found that if they can store it for a customer after they sell it, they'll sell it. Because people don't have a place to store them, right?
They buy on a, on a.
Yeah, so, so they got, they don't have open storage. They don't have open storage, they'll have covered storage, and they'll have this, this enclosed, they call it a private garage storage.
And it's tempered controlled and ma- maintained.
Some of them, I think, might.
So, I think, but I took Jared's point. I think we do, maybe some language is to make sure it doesn't become a rental, not a storage unit.
Not a storage unit.
So, I think private garage is the wrong terminology, and I don't know how that works, but yeah.
But I think right, same thing, I just want to mention.
And they call, and they. The term private garage is, I think, the wrong one.
I think that is the wrong one. It's their marketing term, but they also do concierge service where, hey, I'm going to be there five in the morning. I want my boat on my trailer hitch. I want it, I want it, uh,
It's warmed up, it's ready to go, yeah.
You know, gassed up, I want it cleaned, take the cover off. And so, they, they want to, they offer all of that. It's a service.
No, I think, I think that's, that's a better.
We included it out of concern, because some people would see it being built, going, those are private garages, and they're not allowed to do that. So, we were just wanting to make sure that we were all the same.
So, maybe we just need to come up with a different.
We need to define it better.
We'll, we'll define it better.
Define it more clearly, because it matches the wording exactly.
Exactly, that's what caught my attention.
Yeah, just so you know, the, the, it, these, I won't say private garages, these enclosed storage, you know, for high-end stuff.
These bulk storage.
It's going to be against the north end of this, so it creates a barrier. It, it takes the noise and the light and everything away from the neighbors, because we know.
There's not, there's not a separate access.
Yeah, access through the main gate, the access through the dealership.
No, no. No, it's all going to come through the dealership. It's not going to.
I think before we can sign off on that, I think before we can sign off, I think the council's going to need to test that concierge service with a boat.
Yes.
That's.
The, the new attorney is really.
He's being careful about this.
Ethical line there.
Okay.
I, I thought it was a pretty good business model. People say, I'd love this, but I can't store it anywhere. Oh, wait, look over here, we can store it.
Well, and if there's something we have a lack of, obviously, it's some stories like that, so.
That one, I mean, it doesn't make sense. Any chance this turns into a standard, a storage, a free access from the road?
Okay, any other comments or questions?
We're going to use different terminology, so they don't have the issue.
Yeah.
So, what, staff, are you guys comfortable with all the things we threw off?
Yes, I mean, we can, I think we can work on that. Um, and I will send you a, a strike, so it's, it's a, it's a comparison version of what exists in AMSD and what this new one will be. So, if it's, if it's got a strikeout, it means it was in the original and it's gone, and if it's underlined and colored, then it's an addition.
I'm okay with even just a T chart. Here's the things that existed in the zone, and here's what's changed.
I, it's, I just used word to do that and was trying to, because a lot of it is language. Here's this new paragraph in there versus this, and then we did a, a bunch of numbering changes, so, uh, I think we're trying to be a state or something like that.
Okay, any more comments from council or staff tonight? Michael?
Timing. There was a proposed public hearing on the eighteenth for planning commission.
Yeah, timing, that was my next.
Are we still expecting that to happen?
I think we have, as staff and, and this team have to finel-, finish a packet, and we would need that done by.
Yeah. We're, yeah.
That's smart, onion.
And they're shooting it Friday.
Right. So, we, I think.
When we originally looked at timing, we gave the planning commission, uh, the opportunity to table it for one, for one, uh, time meeting, and then make a decision, and then it goes to city council.
The, the hard thing with doing a public hearing is you'd have to have your packet ready to go by Saturday to publicly advertise it at time, and I don't know if that gives us enough time to get it together, review, and put out for public consumption.
In the.
And when do they meet?
Yeah.
Again? Do the first, September first, the next one after that. And then we need more than a day. Definitely more than a few hours.
Well, it sounds like the plan, it's going to go to the commission first, so that's a lot of concern. What can we do? We're up against some timelines with Colby, I know that. What can we do to? I know we've had a lot of special meetings. What can we do?
Well, it sounds like it's planning commission that might need a special meeting. I, yeah, I think the hardest thing, looking at it, is getting these documents in a consumable format that are finalized, so that they can have a coherent public hearing.
Which is important. That's an important step of it.